Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I think we can, uh, let me pull up my other screen. Call the meeting in order. It is 12:02 PM. And special meeting of the Morehead City Council on November 13th, 2020. And I believe the items. One second here. Trying to think. Did I, uh? Did I miss? Did I get, did we get sent a, like a, a document?
It would have just been, um, on the website.
Okay. One moment, because I didn't have an PDF reader.
Yeah, and I apologize. I'd just gotten the final county documents yesterday, so it did, it was uploaded a little bit later than we normally would.
No worries. Let's make sure I have it here. All right. All right, well, Madam Clerk, let's get a roll call, please.
Shelley Dahlquist?
Here.
Sarah Watson Curry?
Here.
Shelley Carlson?
Here.
Heidi Durand?
Here.
Deb White?
Here.
Larry Selgivold?
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson?
Here.
Steve Lindas?
Here.
And Mayor Jonathan Judd?
Here. Can we please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, folks. And then we'll move on, I think, for the administration items, though we are here to canvass the results of the November 3rd, 2020 election. I do believe there is one other matter that we're adding to the agenda. And this is regarding the discussion regarding the city manager search, and I will turn that over to Attorney Shockley when we get to that point. So I think the where we're at right now is that we need to canvass the results portion, and with that, city manager Molly or city clerk Russ, is there anything else to add to that item?
Um, the only thing we, so we got the final results from the county, so we again are just canvassing those, and then at some point I will need original wet signatures. So whether that is, again, there's no definitive timeline on it because we have the resolution that we're passing. Um, so I'll be looking to each of you at some point to stop and sign, or I can swing by and sign. So, but again, no rush on that.
Okay. All right. So then I think at this point, we just need a motion to approve.
So moved. Deb White. Durand, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now, before we take this roll call vote, I do apologize, Madam City Clerk, that we need to do a roll call for those that are present.
Um, we, in addition to the roll call that we just did, sorry.
Oh, my bad.
That's okay.
I'm, uh, yeah. My apologies, folks. Anyhow, we'll move with the roll call vote of this item.
All right. Uh, Dahlquist?
Yes.
Watson Curry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Durand?
Yep.
White?
Yes.
Selgivold?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Aye.
Lindas?
Yes.
Motion carries. So then we'll move on to the next item, which is the update on the city manager's search. Attorney Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We have, we don't know if you have an action item for the council today. We wanted to provide an update. As you're probably all aware, the increasing number of COVID cases in Clay County and Cass County are causing a number of issues with respect to how we conduct the process of the interviews for the candidates. I think I'll address the low hanging fruit, first of all. Given that it would probably not be advisable to have the entire council in the same room with a candidate from out of state, uh, what we are proposing to do would be to have a partial in-person and a partial virtual interview with the candidates. So like with most of our council meetings where the city clerk, myself, and the mayor and chambers, we proposed to have those same three with the candidate at the table in the front, and then the rest of the council would be conducting the interview. So it would be both virtual and in-person. Uh, that seems like, it seemed like that would be the most appropriate result because with, and Amy would be present also, uh, because we're limited to the 10 people, and so just with the council, council and the mayor, you have nine. So it seemed like the most advisable way to handle the actual interviews of the candidates. And I don't know if that council is okay with that.
Yes, I am.
Uh, the, the second issue leading up to that is that normally we would have a, a tour of the community with, uh, maybe the mayor or some other people from city hall. Uh, in speaking with Amy, uh, we thought it would be advisable just to have one person give the tour to each of the candidates to minimize the contact. And so Derek Lapointe has agreed to be the provider of the tour around the community. Just want to make sure that you're all okay with that. Uh, then prior to the, uh, actual interview with the council, uh, we had intended to have an ELT meeting, uh, and meet and greet with the candidates. Given the restrictions on the number of people and the high positivity rate, uh, we're proposing to do that just through a virtual, um, virtual setting, uh, if that's okay with the candidate. And, uh, I'm seeing head nods to everything. Uh, the last, the last issue is probably the most substantive issue. Uh, the committee, the subcommittee had talked about having, uh, community involvement and a uh, community meet and greet. Uh, in years past, we've actually had the candidate at a large event at Yum Com Center, uh, or, or some other event, uh, meet members of the public. Clearly, that's not an option right now. Uh, we'd also discuss the possibility of perhaps having the, uh, MSUM host, uh, a virtual meet and greet with the candidate. That no longer seems to be a possibility. Uh, and, uh, given the, the stress that is on the computer system, systems and the time for people to try to organize meet and greets, uh, we're not really seeing an opportunity to have a virtual meet and greet because we don't have a good platform to set it up on. Typically, we have tried, we have tried to have another platform outside of the city because of HR issues to conduct those meet and greets. And so we're not really seeing a good, good option for a meet and greet from the, the public. Uh, so, uh, I know the, the mayor had reached out to MSUM and might have a comment, a few comments about uh, their ability to hold that, uh, virtual one-on-one, but that doesn't seem to be a possibility. And so just, uh, wanted to get some input from the council if, if you wanted us to try to set up a virtual meet and greet, or if you just wanted to forego the meet and greet.
I can chat, uh, chime in just to, uh, uh, Councilmember Lindas' point. Yeah, it was in the state. Um, uh, we, we don't have the, uh, the, uh, capacity to do it. And so I think the thought process, if, uh, I just think that it, it's going to be very, very tough to ask an external, uh, an external party to try to do this at any point, uh, whether it's the pick it up now. Um, and, uh, even at the time that this was discussed, uh, the original thought, um, that I had was to have NBA, uh, try to sponsor it. And again, they don't have the capacity. You know, what would it look like? How many people do you open it up to getting it promoted, things of that nature? Um, it would be, I would say, it would be a pretty big deal for folks to try to pull this off. Um, we, we put together a, a program at, uh, M State regarding, uh, Native American Heritage Month, and literally we're still trying to figure out how we sorted that all out. Uh, this is a pretty big deal. So if anybody feels like they wish to take this on, um, and try to get a, a outside entity to do that, more than welcome. I, I, uh, blessings to the person who thinks that they, uh, that, that entity may be able to pull this off. With that being said, the thought that I had, and, uh, I think another person shared this, is that, uh, with the, the, the interviews will be public anyway. Um, and that if people who are watched, uh, will be able to watch and see the interviews and, uh, see the candidates in action, maybe there could be, and I'm sure that there will be, some public, uh, comment that comes after that. That might be the best way to get that, uh, that public feedback. But I think having and hosting an actual, uh, meet and greets during the process, I don't know how it would be feasible, but I'm open to hear what anyone else has to say.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there was a, a quick question about why the city wouldn't host, uh, this type of event. Uh, the reason that the city has not hosted these types of events in the past are due to HR issues. Uh, the city is the potential employer, and when you have meet and greets and, uh, the availability of questions, uncontrolled questions from third parties, you can have questions that could potentially violate, uh, the, uh, requirements of conducting fair and impartial, uh, interviews. And as such, uh, the city has avoided hosting those and instead had a third party host them, uh, where that allows the public to ask more broad-based questions that may not be acceptable for an employer to, to ask. And so that's why it has always been handled by exterior third party. Uh, I can tell you from a legal and an HR standpoint, uh, we both have concerns about if the city tried to host such an event because at such a point, the city, as the potential employer, would have to filter and perhaps reject some questions that were asked by the public, which causes transparency issues and, and concerns from the public. And so our, our preference and recommendation is to have a third party conduct that meet and greet. Whether it's a virtual or in a traditional setting, that it would be, uh, in-person in, in the future.
Does that bring about any, uh, questions or comments from council? Because this is your time to discuss it. Uh, Councilmember Lindas, I see, has a hand up, and then Councilmember White.
So, um, I guess two thoughts. One, um, having the, um, you know, candidates be able to present or, or, or have a, a ten minute, you know, we talked about having a, a a chance for them to actually lay out a, you know, a, a little conversation with, with people in the city, you know, uh, a, a statement, but a little more than a statement, and then be able to take questions would be really beneficial. Um, you know, if, yeah, I don't, I don't know if, if we can't do the Q and A, um, which is another question, and maybe, um, Councilmember White might get to this too. Um, it would still be useful to have the candidates have some sort of recorded, you know, presentation. Um, you know, I thought we, as a subgroup, we came up with, with a pretty nice, um, idea. Um, and I don't know, I, I, I don't want to say that MSUM could do it, but setting up a Zoom webinar is, is very straightforward, and if I had four people, um, we could easily have a Q and A, you know, session. Um, I, I would feel like I don't want to be the one in charge. I, I could be, I could be helped facilitate that just because of my role in the city. Um, but I, I certainly, it's, you know, again, I don't know, and I might be totally, you, it might be something you already asked, and they said, no, we can't do it for these reasons, and those same in-state reasons would apply for MSUM. Uh, but it, I know we have the capacity to run large webinars, um, at M State, uh, MSUM, sorry. I'm going to let Deb talk.
Yeah. Similar things, and I, you know, I just really value the opportunity for community input and transparency. And, and I think, you know, um, I'd rather make us, make the extra effort to see if there would be ways it's possible. And, you know, a couple of thoughts, I'll, um, beyond even what, what Councilmember Lindas mentioned would be, if we did host it, could we, you know, if we are clear at the beginning, here are the things that, um, we're, you know, that you're able to ask questions about, but there are certain things that, that we would not be able to have the candidates address. And so if you are clear with those parameters ahead of time, if your concern is that, you know, somebody might ask a question and then you don't allow that question to be asked, if you tell them ahead of time, here's the things that um, are, uh, you know, areas that can't be discussed, then I, you know, I would think that people could understand why if they then sent a question that tied into that, that it couldn't be discussed. But, so I, you know, I think that would there be a way of still allowing it and being clear with people that there are certain things that the candidates could not discuss. Um, in lieu of that, you know, yeah, if there was a way, it wouldn't be an exchange, but if the candidates could give some kind of a presentation and then citizens could give input, you know, just give their, give their input, just have an opportunity for community input. I think that would be valuable. But, um, and I agree even, you know, if there was an opportunity to reach out to MSUM and see if they would host it. But I, you know, I, I would just, I'd rather see us to make sure that we're really doing everything we can to have citizen input.
So I'll, I'll just jump in and, uh, if, if the city were to host it, what I would recommend is in addition to that list of questions that can't be answered, we would need them to submit either through, through chat what their proposed question is, and then somebody at the city would have to decide if that's an appropriate question to ask because you wouldn't necessarily want to give somebody a platform where they could ask, uh, an inappropriate question. They could say, well, I understand that, but I'm going to ask, you know, what religion you are, which is clearly out of bounds, so.
Councilmember Carlson, and then I want to, after Councilmember Carlson's done, I would like to have, um, I, I don't want to, I want to have also any, uh, Sedergrin, uh, address whether or not HR has the capacity as well as our IT, uh, to take this on. And Councilmember Lindas, I think, since, uh, if this is important, and I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done, but you will have to probably lead, uh, the, uh, if this is something that folks think that we should do, you can be the conduit to, uh, talk with, uh, MSUM, your entity, to see if this can work and whether or not they have the capacity, uh, to move forward. So with that, we'll pass it over to the Councilmember Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say I'm really uncomfortable with the city being, um, any part of hosting this event. Um, as you've stated in the past, it's always been third-party entities. Um, so if MSUM is willing to host and they're able to pull it together in the next four days with a weekend in there, I'm, I'm 100% on board for that. I know some of the discussion that we had on the, um, kind of screening committee was, um, was it going to be limited to how many people on, you know, if there's 1,200 people on a Zoom call, does MSUM have that capability? And then how do you weed through the questions and who would be in charge of that? Um, who would be in charge of asking the questions? Would the candidates both be asked the same question and the candidates are both then, um, answering the question? Um, or is it candidate one has a half an hour and candidate two has the second half an hour? I think if we are going to be approaching MSUM, I think that those things would need to be decided. So we have those parameters to give to MSUM. Um, but logistically, I think we, we struggled, um, even in the interview committee on how that would be done. Um, and I, I really am strongly against having the city be involved too much in that posting and the facilitation and everything like that. Also think it's important to bring up that Councilmember Hendrickson had, had mentioned, and, and, uh, Councilmember Duran might want to chime in here too, since you both have the experience of going through this process, that when they had the in-person meet and greets, the candidates actually ended up getting cornered. Um, and really only talked to a few members of the community during in-person meet and greets. So before we turn it over to Councilmember Lindas and White to approach MSUM, I guess my proposal would be that we have these specific parameters in place.
So let me, uh, before, so Amy, if you can hold off just one moment, uh, we'll let, uh, uh, Councilmember Watson Curry, and if there's any council that wishes to chime in, uh, we can get that. Now, just want to make sure that, uh, we have Ms. Sedergrin on standby to see whether or not we even have the capacity to do this, uh, in four days, and then we'll go from there. So, Councilmember Watson Curry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I wonder if the library could be of any assistance. Um, they manage both programming and book talks, um, through their legacy programs, so they might possibly have the infrastructure and knowledge. Um, that's one possibility. I was also thinking potentially League of Women Voters, but that seems a bit outside their realm, and um, as a volunteer-run organization, that seems like a bit extreme to task with. Um, to pull back, I did have one other question, too. We do have a candidate from out of state, and I just was very curious about their comfort level traveling at this point. So if there is, if there is a 100% virtual option, just given the state of where we're at with, um, high percentage of infection and community spread. So I know that's not in line with this current dialogue, but I just wanted to express that, um, concern and, and accommodation, if that needs to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson Curry. Uh, before we hand it over to, um, Ms. Sedergrin, is there anyone else from the council uh, that, that has any, uh, thoughts or comments they wish to make on what has already been spoken? Councilmember Selgivold?
Uh, more public, uh, access television. They had a black box theater at one time. Can't they set something up? People call in or just have a set, a bunch of questions, and we broadcast, it gets broadcast a time that this interview or presentation is going to be made at a certain time. And so, I mean, you have to have, you have to have cable television, but you also have to have, you have to have Wi-Fi, and you have to have computer hookup, so you're, you're going to hit most of the people. Option.
Okay. Anybody else from council wish to be heard on this? So I'll make sure we're not talking in circles here for the next half an hour. Let's get, uh, Councilmember, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, Chuck. Let me do this. Uh, let's do Councilmember Durand, the Councilmember Hendrickson, and the Councilmember White, because she's already spoken on this, and then go back to that. So Councilmember Durand, then Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I tend to, uh, agree with Councilmember Carlson. Um, if MSUM thinks that they could get it done, you know, I, within the parameters, go for it. Um, I also think it's important, like what Councilmember Watson Curry said, um, you know, is this individual comfortable coming in-state? Um, have we reached out and, and spoke with that person to see if their interest has changed, or if there is a concern there or, and whatnot? Um, otherwise, you know, and, and Councilmember Selgivold's ideas is pretty good, too. I don't know if, if it's logistically possible, but it, it's definitely um, an interesting idea. Um, I, I understand why some people are, are, feel it is very, very important to get community involvement. Um, it's, it's just, it's so unfortunate that it's during this time of COVID, um, when we're seeing spiking rates increase, and it, it's really just unfortunate timing. Um, but we want to do our due diligence and make sure we, we're keeping everybody safe and everybody at home, uh, as much as possible. Um, those are just, those are, those are my thoughts. Oh, I, I would add, the, I, I do believe strongly in, in a, you know, Chuck and I have experienced this, we've gone through this uh, before, that the community members who are very passionate will make their voices known somehow in some way, shape, or form. They will email us, they will call us, they will do something to make sure that we hear them. So, you know, like, you know, last time the meet and greets, yeah, the, the, the candidates, they, they did tend to get cornered and, and and, yeah, I don't want to say confronted, because that's not the right word, but, um, they, their time did seem to be monopolized by, you know, by a handful. Um, so, you know, let's keep that in our minds, too, because if, if we're thinking this is, we want this to be a huge community event, I don't know that that would be that big. I think it would probably be the individuals that, you know, consistently, consistently make, you know, make their opinions and their concerns and, you know, let us know how they're feeling. Um, so anyways, I'm done now. Those, those are my, my few thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Durand. Councilmember Hendrickson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For, first thing, I am not driving. I was en route to my office and, uh, ran out of time, so I just, I'm taking this call in my car, so just to put that to bed real quick. Uh, second thing, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Carlson and Councilmember Duran about everything they said. Um, my one question, we have, I mean, and I'm not, I, I, you know, if, uh, MSUM wants to take this on and they can pull it off, that'd be great, but I mean, we have four days. How are we supposed to get the word out to the community? Um, you know, just, you know, just how are, how are we going to get people involved, or what, what would be, I don't want to say marketing aspect of it, but how would we contact people? Would we put it on the website? Because to me, um, people are really busy, even though it's a pandemic, people are busy right now. So I'm just wondering, you know, what, what we could do to get this out. So, that's all I have.
Councilmember White.
Trying to think how to say it. So I just, I, again, want to reiterate, I think some form of community engagement is very important. Whether, and I don't, I'm not wedded to one particular kind, type. I think it's, it's unfortunate that at this point, it maybe is too late for us to try to get an outside party to do it. Um, but I just think that there's a real value in that, and, and I, um, and in particular, actually, Heidi, I really appreciate your comments, and I think this is another reminder of trying to make sure that we're not just getting the voices of the, the big players. We know that there are certain people that already, they, they know the system, they, they know how to engage with us. But how might we do it in a way that we could reach out to, you know, to get other people's voices? So, again, even if it was something like a presentation that we put up there and allow citizens to give feedback, and we could spread the word within the community about it and allow people get feedback so that those of you on the search committee could see that. But, um, just the opportunity to, you know, continue to send that message that we value our citizens' input and, um, our voice matters. So I just, you know, I, I really, it, uh, would be troubled if we completely eliminate any opportunity for that in the process.
Or, uh, I, uh, for that, um, I think for those, and again, I think we all would agree with that. Um, the issue is, I, what I think the committee needs to hear are solutions. I mean, I think, and, and I think Councilmember Selgivold did a really good job of pointing out a potential solution. But we can't speak just- But we can't speak just in the cloud of what we'd like to see and why it's important. And I don't think any single person on here would disagree. But I think we need to hear what solutions and what people individually can help out with. I mean, I just, I was a on the team to put together. A short, one-hour luncheon learn at M State for Native American Heritage Month. And we had two weeks to prepare for this. And little did I know, with only two people trying to put this thing together, how much work it goes into putting in. A one-hour filmed presentation. And that's why I'm saying for those of you that have been, you want to reach out to MSUM. And this is two weeks it took together to put together a one-hour presentation. So if you think that, I mean, having I've gone through it and I know that we don't have the capacity. And I can, and I'm more than willing to show you why it was very time consuming. So for folks, I agree that this is important. We're past that point. We all agree that there should be some public engagement. The question is, do we have the capacity individually to make this work? So with that, I want to be sure that Ms. Ettergren, because we don't want to put this all on her and that's not fair. So I want to make sure that one, what is HR's role and whether or not HR have capacity? We also should include Chris Rady, and I don't want to put him on the spot, because this isn't necessarily going to be on him. And we have to follow the procedures legally. That attorney Shockley has outlined and not compromise this process by putting us all on the city. So with that, I'll reach out to Ms. Ettergren for any feedback and be as candid as as you can be. Regarding whether or not you have the capacity or your office has the capacity to make this work.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there would be obviously some concerns because the HR department is currently pretty stressed, pretty taxed right now. Because of not only just our normal things of open enrollment, but Mondays and Sundays going into Mondays are very taxing. And because of COVID, it is our biggest day for COVID calls, new quarantines, new testings. That pretty much the HR generalist, it's all day long that she just does COVID calls on Mondays. And they've become now to a point that I then am reaching out to the directors because of it. So we, we are very taxed. I don't know if I could, you know, make it happen. Obviously, IT would play an important role in it. And I know that they have been very busy too. But due to some other things that occurred this week, we lost some time in regards to preparation overall for this. With Baker Tilly that's doing the background that I need to get some data together for all of you, that that was going to be today in the weekend's project. So I am a bit concerned about it. Could we make it? I mean, I'll make whatever we need to make happen, but I worry that it just might not be at the level it really maybe should be. And I would worry about what that would look to people of not having a professional. You know, event to occur. And obviously, what John Shockley discussed in regards to the concerns. Those are real concerns that we have in regards to liabilities and so forth. So that is a very big concern for me. But if we wanted to move forward and find a way, it would be, can we execute that properly? In regards to the question about if the candidate would want to participate 100% virtually. Today I was going to give them a call after whatever decisions was made about the changes. I have already spoken to the candidate from out of town. They they had already got their airfare and is coming. I was going to then reach out to them about these changes and I can certainly ask them in regards to their comfort level. If they would rather do a virtual, if that is something. Any question? That's kind of all I have right now.
No, I appreciate you sharing and for your candid comments, because here's the thing, folks, we're in the middle of a pandemic. There's health concerns, there's legal concerns, and we want to have a fair process. So we just can't throw things on a wall and hope that they stick. I mean, this is unprecedented times. And we all in collectively have a lot going on. And and I mean, I get it. I think we all get it. But I think we want to make sure that we're not just throwing this process together so that it's compromised and it's not professional. I know that I'm looking at what I have here. Ms. Ettergren, is there a way to create a, okay, wait, there's a bunch of things going on here. Is there a way to, okay, there's a question about creating a survey to collect questions or comments? To share with the candidates, council. And again, and then another idea is if people are going to be able to watch the meetings as they occur. Could we allow folks to submit their input based on what they see during the meetings? Being that they're going to be live streamed? How about that?
Certainly, Chris Rady could probably talk more to about how the process, but I would assume that we could do something there. It looks like we had to set aside from about noon to 2:30 for deliberations. Certainly after the interviews are done, we could be bringing those comments in for the group to look at and consider. I don't know if you'd want to delay decision making unless you needed more information. John Shockley could probably report to that more, but it is best to try to make that decision as soon as possible. But at least if you got that initial feedback for those who chose to watch, it might be a good alternative.
Okay, so then with that, Mr. Addy, we don't want to put you on the spot. But what are your initial thoughts based on all the robust conversation that you've been hearing so far?
We can certainly livestream the meeting next week and on YouTube. YouTube does have a, an option to allow comments on the live streams to collect those. Unfortunately, there's no way to ensure that those individuals are more had residents or have their identity. We could also have a forum on our website that it could fill out. And they could ask more detailed questions about residency and identity to collect that at the same time. I know there was comments about MSUM and other entities. Do you know several of the IT staff at MSUM? I could contact them and see about their capacity to handle that also. But if you were going down to live streaming, we could certainly make that work next week.
And Chris, and and I do just on a, you know, on this note to be sure. Does your office have the capacity to do this? Because again, I want to be conscientious. Because now if we're, if we're doing this, this is kind of putting you in your office in a time sensitive situation too. So I mean, what are your candid thoughts on that? And just be honest about it, man.
Sure. Setting up the live stream is not a big deal. That's, we're essentially turning on like a standard city council meeting. And so it's just the the time to sit there and and. You know, like another council meeting. So we can certainly make that work. Collecting the input from the the public. You know, it would depend on how detailed and complicated that gets. But it essentially could be a website forum that one of our developers could set up in an hour or so. I don't see that being that that difficult or time consuming. It's certainly feasible to do on a timeframe.
Okay, thank you for sharing. The only question I'm reading now is the, the candidates be given a prompt in a recorded 10-minute presentation. That will be available for the public. I'm assuming that's going to be, that's an open question. I think I'll probably direct it to Ms. Ettergren. Your thoughts on that?
I guess I'm not fully understanding it. Would it be where we ask them a question? Do they record an answer that we just make available? Because depending upon what it is that they would be speaking about. I guess the, the questions being asked at the interview are are very probing questions. That I think will will elicit good responses. And those are really good questions, I think, that will help, help people understand more than anything else that I can think of. Maybe I'm not understanding it.
Yeah, I'm gonna, because remember Lindos, where that's your question, where to specify?
So I guess one of the, one of the aspects of this is, you know, trying to figure out what is actually doable. And what might be attainable in the in the future. But what we'd like to do is get residents to be able to. Have questions or give input. As I understand it, our interview process is going to be live streamed, but it's not going to be recorded. Is that true?
True, and John Shockley probably speak more to this, but I would probably shy very much away from during your, your interview. With the candidate of allowing public to ask questions, because that would really open us up to some liability issues.
Right, no, and that's not what I'm saying. So my feeling, my feeling was you could give a prompt. And I don't want to, I don't want to start saying what that prompt would be. But essentially, we talked about in the subcommittee, having the candidates an opportunity to have a 10-minute statement slash presentation. That could be recorded by them, or we could actually have the city record that. We could put that up on the website along with that web form that that Chris's team is putting together. And and invite people from the community to basically give feedback, but also then to watch this, this live stream. So to me, that that would, that would help with the transparency aspect is what I'm looking at. I would like to be able to introduce these candidates to our public and have them be able to, you know, put their best foot forward. So to speak. And then, and so that would be part of if you were to then actually have the ability to have. A webinar at MSUM or some other location. That then could allow them to do that same aspect and then have questions that would flow in. But you know, they could be separate. So if we can't get the MSUM to do a webinar, you could still have the candidates have a statement. That is available for the public to see and invite comments or questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I was just going to ask council member Lindas, who would then be monitoring the questions asked?
So there's two processes to this. The first is having a presentation would be, there would be no Q and A for a presentation. It would just be something recorded and you put up on, on. And it's like, you know, meet the candidates and and here's a form for you to give input. Here's also when the presentate, or sorry, when the interviews are going to have, take place, you can, you can tune in, watch them and get more comments. If you were to then have a webinar at MSUM, the, the, there would have to be a team of four people. That would be filtering or not filter, filtering sounding a little bit weird, but be looking at the questions and then asking those, repeating them. So the questions wouldn't be asked by by people, they would be submitted, much like, you know. Debates that I've gone to where people submit questions and then someone, someone reads the questions from the audience. Right now, if that's even possible. You know, one, I think MSUM is the capacity, but does MSUM want to? I mean, the administration has to actually sign off on this. I can't go rogue and just create a webinar. I think I might get in trouble.
Would they be able to, I mean, it's Friday afternoon and this would occur on. Tuesday night?
Tuesday night.
So. Logistically, do you think MSUM could get, you could get the permission from them and those IT folks could put it together? I'm, I'm assuming they would have to work on the weekends. I don't know if they. Are able to do that or they want to do that, that they could put it together. Basically, it'd have to be put together in a day.
If they gave me permission, I could create a webinar in five minutes. And and I have, you know, I, again, I don't want to be the one being the front face of it. But if you have four or five people working behind the scenes, the biggest issue is people have to know how to work as a team. On, on facilitating webinars, so that you don't have mistakes happen. But other than that, it's a very straightforward to set up.
It is straightforward, but I think you'll figure out, as I have put together something, but you'll, you'll figure it out. But but I think, I think in theory, you're absolutely correct, Councilmember Lindas. But I think again, in, 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 in working with this dynamic, and I don't want, and I want to be. Councilmember Duckworth, okay, I didn't see your hand up, but Liz, well. You have a question?
I was just going to say pretty much the same thing that way back at the beginning is that, that the people. Have already been sending in emails and I think they do not need to be asking questions. Just like we're not going to be asking questions. They'll already have the questions to answer. And they can watch those questions being answered. And from those, they can email us and tell us or give us their input. And I think they're just going to have to trust us to choose. The city manager and listen to what what they email to us. I don't think we need to have something that involved in this short a time. It could just really blow up. I'd rather go safer route.
Thank you for your feedback, Councilmember Duckworth. Councilmember White.
Sure, just saying, listening to everything, I would say the webinar, it seems unteniable. So I would be fine if we moved off of that. And I think in my thought, the, the question would be, there's one opportunity of having people watch the. Meetings and submit input. And then council member Linda said, in addition to that, what if we had the candidates record something, an introduction of themselves? The citizens could watch that, they could watch the meetings and they could submit input. So in my opinion, those would be the, you know, I would. Look at decide between those two, because I just, as much as the webinar thing sounds great and I wish we were doing it. It just doesn't sound like it's possible, it's feasible at this time.
This is council member Duran. I, Deb, I, I would agree that the, with the importance of like some type of an introduction. I think that is very important. If if we're already recorded, if those, if the meeting is already recorded. I, I think putting that up there for people to watch is pretty simple, pretty clear cut. And then, yeah, if if they want, if people want to reach out, telephone, email. I, I think that shows that we are doing what we can without making it too complicated. And keeping it as simple and safe as possible. You know, if that's attainable, if that's doable. And if it's, you know, relatively easy from Amy's point of view and from Chris's point of view. I would support that.
Okay, folks, so it's 12:50 and I want to be respectful of people's time. I'm not sure if we have a consensus or not, but we're going to have to get one in the next 10 minutes. So I guess, and speaking of transparency and openness, what I would probably say to do as well. Ms. Ettergren is out of fairness to the second candidate that is coming up here. We should probably alert that candidate that this is out for that, that person to see. Because obviously it is a public meeting and anyone can attend. But I want to make sure that they are aware that this conversation is taking place before they arrive. As we obviously have another candidate sitting here. So I want to make sure that this is open and available for them to watch. So we're, we're all being fair in this process. So with that being said, where are we at, folks? What are we looking at doing? And what is the wishes of the council? And getting a consensus of what we need to do so that Ms. Ettergren and or Mr. Rady can move forward. Councilmember Watson Curry.
Thank you. Just in the interest, so there, you've all heard K S, keep it simple, stupid. But I think at this moment, it's keep, keep it simple and safe. We are already getting emails. Would it be possible? I just, I know my inbox is a disaster. It would be great to have just a, a point where any comments about this particular topic can go. So everyone is assured that they've seen it and have a chance to read it. That's just my only concern. You do have to dig a little bit to contact mayor and council. And if we could just make a really simple collect all for any sort of public comments, that would simplify it. And make it a little bit more accessible. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson Curry. Um, anyone else, uh, can we, can I get a hand if anyone that wants to kind of, I, I think we're generally, what I'm hearing is there may or may not be a webinar. Uh, can, can folks give some sort of element of affirmative, negative, if, if that's still on the table or no?
I don't, I don't support a webinar.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor's Chuck, I think if we tried to do a webinar, it just doesn't seem rushed to the public. So I'm not supporting that either.
Okay. So I got three, I see a thumbs down. Anyone else? I see another one, another one, another one.
I'm fine not doing a webinar. Well, I, I like the kiss. Keep it safe and simple.
Okay.
I, I would really like to have some way that the public can see how to give input on, on the front page or something. Um, uh, to invite more people, because, um, I think what's already been said is some people know how to, how the system works and then there's an awful lot that don't. And I understand it might be difficult to get a, you know, 10 minute video introduction of each candidate that we can also put up there, but if that was possible, I think that would be very good.
Okay. Okay. So what, what, what do folks feel about that? Please give your input. I see a thumbs up. Two, three.
I'm good with that.
But, all right. So we got that down. Okay. And so that'll make the process more transparent and equitable. That's good. All right. So we got those two things resolved. Is there anything else that we're missing? Because I want to be sure to give Ms. Sedergrin and, uh, both candidates fair access to, so that they know what's coming and what their expectations are. Are we missing anything else, folks? Okay. No, thank you. I mean, this has been a good, a good conversation. I think a lot has came out of it. I just want to make sure that we're sensitive to the folks that have to do the work. Um, and also, uh, for the candidate that's up, that, that's taking valuable time coming up here, uh, that they are well aware of what they're getting into. So, um, so Ms. Sedergrin, if you could follow up and, and send or, you know, at least make available uh, to that person this, this, uh, special meeting. And then, uh, do we have any thing? I'll get to your question here, uh, Councilmember Carlson, just a second. But Ms. Sedergrin, City Attorney Shockley, um, is there anything else that we need to be concerned from a legal aspect based on what the council has established by consensus? Are we missing anything?
I don't think so. Um, I think we've covered most of it. I think we've got a pretty good understanding of it that we will do the, uh, department gathering, the candidate tours, the interview, all as kind of planned, except for a virtual. And then, um, I can work on the idea of the 10 minute presentation. My only concern is, is obviously Mr. Kramer being that he flies in on Monday. I don't know how quickly that could be done. Um, but I'll have to find out what time flies in and stuff on Monday.
No, that's cool. And since again, to be fair and equitable, yeah, a- as soon as possible, uh, that, uh, that the, uh, out of, out of town candidate can have access to what was discussed, the better. Um, so everybody's on the same page. That would be great. And I think I'm, I'm reading here. So Councilmember Carlson, the 10 minute presentation, like we got that figured out. An introduction with experience, vision, ideas, goals. Um, and presenting what we want them to present on. Oh, good Lord. Do, when and available where for how long? We'll have, um, Ms. Sedergrin work on that. Vision for Morehead. Okay. So, so we got an idea where I think where council has some ideas about what the introduction should consist of in the substantive portion. Vision, ideas, goals. And I will let Ms. Sedergrin work on the do and of how it will be available. So, um, Attorney Shockley, are we missing anything?
No, I think, I think you've captured everything and, uh, Amy and I can hand, uh, take the intent of the council and move forward with the information provided today.
Okay. All right, folks. No, appreciate the conversation. Is there anything else that we need to cover that we might've missed? Does everyone feel comfortable moving forward with what we discussed? Seeing head nods. Yes, yes, yes. Okay. All right, great folks. Thanks again for the input. Um, and we really appreciate the conversation. And if, unless there's anything else that we need to discuss, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Deb White.
Second, Shelley Felquist.
All right, folks, we are adjourned. Have a healthy and safe weekend. Thank you again.